Good morning. Thank you all for coming. We're going to start our public hearing this morning. The public hearing is on Governor Communication number 11-375. We've had a public hearing on this communication before, but there were some changes made to it, the initial communications, so that's why we're having this public hearing. I have with me our speaker and my vice chairman, and we also have the vice chairman of GHW, and we have the all members of the RED committee, the chairman, vice chairman, and a member. We have thanked our budget officer for being with us this morning. So I'd like to thank you, Lieutenant Governor, and for those that come with you, so we can at least go over their requests again and understand it before we, our two committees, make our final recommendation to the whole legislature. I'll give you the floor. I'll give the chairman of RED committee the floor to... Oh, okay, go ahead, Lieutenant Governor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Talamesi. Let me just first recognize the presence and also pay respect to the speaker and the committee's chairs that are here, already being recognized, and members of your committee that are here, senators, all the senators that are present here. For the purpose of brevity, I'm just going to go into... Maybe let me introduce the witnesses from the executive branch that are here, so we can delve right into the public hearing on this one. So in absentia, the chairman of the Expo Committee is, as you all know, George Ruenghe, and he's not here. So when we met last week, the acting chairman was James Altamal. And also, he was supposed to be here with us, but not here as well. And then we have the CEO of the Yap Visitors Bureau, Suzanne Goulier. And then with me is the director of OES, Thomas Thun. And then also deputy director of R&amp;D Oblaw is also with us. Also present with us here in this gallery is our chief of finance. Chief of Budget is supposed to be also here with us. Somehow, she's not in the office. Then we have staff like for YVB, Vanessa, key staff of the YVB, and also the other gentleman, Kevin, the product development officer for YVB, who's supposed to be also with us this morning. So with that, I close my opening remark on our behalf and thank you all. We will try to explain whatever budget line items that were sent out to the body here for consideration, this esteemed body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor, Acting Governor. The initial request for the Expo in Governor Communication 11-375, the total request was 265,000. And Congress appropriated some money and we received a new figure, revised figure. It came down to, what, 110,329? Because the rest were supposedly be taken care of by the Congress appropriation. I would now like to turn the floor over to the chairman of RED committee to take us through the budget as revised. Thank you.
Kamwar, Chairman. Before we go over the revised budget, just some additional information on this. I did some illegal work in reaching out to our good member of Congress, chairman of JNGO, Senator Andy Chor, to find out what happened, because I thought they did appropriate 200,000. And apparently, our request for 200,000, there was also a request from... That was a request that National put in, but then they ended up splitting that amount in two. 100,000 supposedly for us and 100,000 to help the other facilitate the other states making their way to Yap, the cost of the other states making their way to Yap. You're nodding that that is correct, that's the plan. And so, the other day, when even with our proposed adjustments to the budget, Chairman Finance, it still kind of sat with some of us in the room a little accordingly, that this is a national holiday. It was enacted by the former president, right, former President Panwala, who started this holiday. I think after visiting Yap and seeing our lovely Yap Day, he went back and put in... But, and then I did some digging and I found out that the inaugural event, they gave half a million, 500,000 to Pointe Bay State to host that. Of course, right, a little bit under. But then when the fishing fish situation came in, two only got 100K to host it, is my understanding. And we're also going into the same boat. So... And then I can't help but compare it to something which we've always held and then we hold near and dear to our hearts, Yap Day, which is nowhere near the ballpark figure, even with adjustments coming into the 80,000, that amount. So for a lot of us in the room, as you're representatives and trying to be frugal and responsible with your money for the state, we were not very happy that this is a national push to have this event, but yet they don't want to step up to the plate and give us the money we asked for and then to have R&amp;D, National R&amp;D come in and split that, our request, when we're hosting this. That's really the problem, that I think if you put this to the vote in our next session, we will not get the necessary seven yes for this money to flow and for us to have this event. Recognizing some of the pros for why we should have this, that the good chairman of finance shared with the group this could generate potentially a conservative figure of 500,000 in tourism money, is that right, for the state? Though I even question that one, because those numbers could only have been brought from Yap Day. Maybe that's what we use for those numbers. But this is not Yap Day, and this is not a known event like Yap Day is. If we want to get anybody, it's mostly from the other states. They'll be coming on per diem and budgets, and they won't be like having regular tourists come from outside with money to burn and spend. So even that figure, I had question marks on. So... But yeah, really, that's why we're having this this morning, because I worry that if we put this on the floor, it might not pass. So... Did you want me to go over the adjustments or you want...
No, thank you, Chairman. We can go over the revised budget and at least we let them know what we think of those figures. And in our meeting, the committee meeting, I informed the committees of what the YVB estimates of the revenue that will be generated and like... So if we spend, say, 100,000 of our money, we will have like more, twice or triple that amount revenue that will come in when this expo. So it's good for the state that we generate revenue. So we can now go over the revised budget that was submitted, which totals 110,000. The first one we look at is for the contractor. And we see that the contractor will be for the three schools. So again, where... And that's why I asked if Dominic is going to be here, because education still can use the money to do the contract for this, to, for... The contractor to repair the schools. That is still eligible under the current fund. So... And the question is, why is it still included in here? Why not be part of what they're going to be responsible for? You still have the 10,000.
Thank you for that question. We put in the contractor for 10,000 only because we understand how important it is to clean up the school every day. I'm not sure what educations will do on that part. But they will be cleaning up the bathroom, picking up all the trash, and disposing in nine days. So that's before the event and after the event. And that includes complex. And it's very important, because the other expos we had in the other states, it would be the participants cleaning up and just putting it away. So they would be given brooms and whatnot to clean their own facility where they're staying. We don't want to host participants coming rather than having them clean up. So we have a lot of contractors on island. It's a good time to give them some funding to make sure all the schools and complex is clean.
Thank you. We have no problem with cleanup. The church school is responsible for the payment. And since it's going to be cleaning up the classrooms, I'm sure education doesn't want to have a dirty classroom, so they should have some money there to make sure their classrooms are clean. Chairman and committee, you have any question or comments on this? Go ahead, Speaker.
My respect to you, Acting Governor, and to all of you directors and deputy directors, the staff of YVB. I think it is a good time for us to discuss this at state level, as to whether or not they... I think the national government heard us loud and clear that we are not appreciating the fact that our request is not given to us. But for us here at the state level, I think we need to really come out and be truthful to each other. Are we ready? Do we have the money to move forward with this program initiated by the national government? Or do we need to postpone this? Before you were out, Acting Governor, leadership give a letter to President with this thing. And we know that Congress is doing their part. He may or may not have the authority to really tell them what they want to do. We know they give the money to R&amp;D Department, and this is how they split it up. We know that it's not enough, because the request that came to us in the beginning from your office is 265,000. But we have to really tell us the truth here, whether we can move forward with this and whether or not we have the funds for it. I think that's the two most important issue that we need to answer and then move forward. As we all know, we have so many things want to be happening at the state level. The state funeral, the ordination, and then expo. And we have things here and there that we also need to be attending. So... And I think this is something that should be coming from the executive branch and the task force and the... All the relevant agencies, departments that work so hard to put this thing together. We want to do something that is good, but whether or not we have the funds for it. And if you guys justify that, and we want to believe the fact that you submitted to us on paper that this is what we're going to be generating from this. We have an experience in 2018 FSM game or microgame that, yeah, we haven't received a real report on that. We don't want to repeat the same problem, but we trust you to tell us. And we have all the people here who do the funding, or they can check the funding as to whether we have or not. But we don't want FSM to continue doing this to us, because it is something that they initiated, and this is the cost of it given to them, and they split it up. So all these things, we need to connect it and see whether we... If we want to move forward and we have the fund for it, we need to communicate to them that we, with all due respect, we don't want to continue this, because we want to work together, as you guys have been advocating so many times to us at the state level, that we want a unity. So unity, meaning same amount to all the state. And we're the farthest. So we can understand that people make trouble to Yap with their high fare of travel, but this is our request. Why they have the request that they would not submit it to you and you split our request? So let me stop here and perhaps you can tell us. And both committee will work their best with all the technical people with the funding, as we don't want to jeopardize anything in our state for this. And we may not be able to do it to the level that we want to do. As you guys experienced the other three FSM expo, we don't want to go under those three expo that previously done. We want to either match it or do a better job. That's the Yapist way of thinking, and I think we should be maintaining it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Any other comments on... Yeah, go ahead, Acting Governor.
If I may, on behalf of my team that is here, to explain where we go from the beginning to here. And I even talked to the president when he was here, when we had the dinner with him. And he told me the same thing. I was in Pompe when this bill for the expo funding was being circulated around by the congressmen and congresswomen in that gallery at the national government. So I was there lobbying with some of the senators and also the lawyers that were involved during that hearing. So I ran into the lawyers that were involved, and what they told me is that it was passed on first reading, 200,000 for Yap Expo. And then I thought it was okay, so I came, met with the president, and he said, "Oh, they approved..." Let's say, Congress approved the 200,000 for the expo here in Yap, because that's what we requested. And that was the request that was sent ahead by the late governor, and we stuck to that. We want to go that way. What I learned recently, when I'm here now, and from key staff, is that R&amp;D National is taking 100,000 out of that approved fund, 200,000 for Yap State. So I'm trying to get to Secretary of R&amp;D to find out why. Because from what I hear from the lawmakers at the national government, is that 200 is specifically what Yap requested to be used here by our YVB and the task force of the expo. So there we are. And I have also yet to talk with the president to query what happened. You told me that the 200,000 is for Yap that we requested. If, then we would like to find out whether that is the truth, that R&amp;D National is taking 100, half of it. We need, because we met last week with the YVB folks and the task force. And what we were thinking is that if national government takes that 100,000 away from that 200, we will not have sufficient funding to run this expo here in Yap. We will recommend to the leadership that we delay this expo to another date if the 100,000 is taken by FSM government, the Department of R&amp;D. That was what we were thinking. And it's good that we have this public hearing with you so we can share what we have discussed and it would be recommending. So I just checked with the CEO of YVB, and we're still on that. We may not be able to host the expo if we don't get that sufficient funding through the national government. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Governor. That sounds encouraging. Yeah, please work with them. We may have to ask for delay until we are fully funded, because it's something that is created by them. So back to you, Chairman.
Kamwar, Chairman. You know, that's been the... The idea all along is if we want to host this, you help us with the funding. But to have a line department, the LIT, I guess, change our ask. We asked for 200,000, and they gave us 100, and they want us to put on a good show. That's a little difficult. And so, if that's a viable option, to hold off and see what president can do to put that money back, then I think that's perhaps what's best for us. That's making sense.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the bill, the title of the appropriation in that bill was FSM Expo in Yap. So if it's FSM Expo in Yap, why are we funding part of it? Because it's FSM Expo. So can we say that we're going to wait for you, Acting Governor, and your staff to work with the national government, whatever the outcome of your negotiation? You can come back to us. Speaker? Go ahead.
With all due respect, as I mentioned not too long ago, they heard us. If they go ahead, we need to be ready. We cannot just... Because they already heard that's now, that our frustration is hurt. So if they say, "Okay, we're going to give you the 200,000", are we ready to move forward? A commitment of the state, we need to put in some commitment, because it's going to be held here and there will be some benefit to the state. Yes, we understand that. But we want that request that submitted to them to be honored and given to us. The PCD was mentioned. That 100,000 is given. Have we received it here already? Is there any move to that, to throw it down to the state level? If it has, then we have to be ready. So if they say, "Okay, we want to give you the 200,000", can we move on to host this on the same date as they mentioned? That's something we need to ask ourselves and be ready for it. Because all these things is a negotiation type of thing. Yeah, when they know, they would try to do their part. But when they do their part, we're ready at the state level. That, we need to clear that. We can postpone. Do we need to send them a date? We have to put that down. So all the leadership should understand and the task force and everybody. So let us clear those things. Let's not come together to meet and then split up without the clear understanding of what we, the state, want to do. And by then, we are ready. And by then, we can have the session for the little commitment if we're going to... Because there is still, and I'm sure Chairman here would ask a question on that, because there are some clear understanding of the payments. the payments that needs to be, because we have community looking at us that we told them to perform the dance. So we're in between the national government and the community. We want to move forward with this and not making any of them really mad, but we sort of pull here and try to give here and, and then be on the same page for everybody. So I, I, I hope we can clear those things up before we, we split in this meeting because that, that's something that we're supposed to be doing. That's our responsibility. And whoever responsible to contact the national government says, yeah, this is our situation. This is the day. We are ready. If the money is not given to us, then we cannot this year. But if the money is given to us, we're ready. So can, can?
Uh, Speaker, with all due respect, yes, for me as the political focal point for this government at the executive branch, and I'll leave it to the experts to give you more detail in their plans, but I will be making phone calls. I plan to call the President and I plan to call the Secretary of RND at the National, say what's going on. And these folks, the experts can brief you on whether we are ready. If they say, okay, we'll give you the money today, are we ready? They've been meeting, the, the committee has been meeting and getting prepared. So can I? And I just checked with my Director of OES. What he's telling me is they have not even received any document on that one. Uh, I don't know OPB's, uh, here. Have you guys received anything? No. So let me, with all due respect, go ahead, CEO of YVB.
Um, let's give YVB, YVB first. Yeah, go ahead, YVB.
Uh, sure. Thank you. Um, I'm no expert, we're no expert, but we're trying our very best. Due to the commitment of our state government in 2022, the first Expo, we were supposed to host the second, but the traditional leaders and the administration at that time agree that we'd be, we'd be the last. Only because we should be the best and do our best. Uh, I think we're ready. The, basically, right now, as of last Friday, ESA is hundred percent full occupancy for that week in July twenty-one to twenty-six. Waterfront Inn is a hundred percent full occupancy. Monterey Bay Resort is forty-four percent full occupancy, not full, but forty-four percent. Hilltop and Bayside Inn, we're still waiting for the response, but we believe the Special Hilltop should already be hundred percent full occupancy. And we're also checking with the car rentals. We're still waiting on word on that. We already have commitments from advertisers for YVB to be in Yap. PATA will be here in Yap, MWR. There's a lot of folks coming into Yap specifically for this micro-explo. We've ordered mattresses through the, because the hundred thousand is available right now. We're trying to work with our state. Hopefully, we can get that to Yap and it'd be easier to use. Right now, it's still at National, so we're already sending them for Forma and whatnot to, because we'd be receiving the mattresses at the end of June. So there's a lot of preparations on this. It's the implementation part that we need to, that's where we're stuck at. And it's true, we're asking for a hundred ten thousand. We're specifically kind of like in the same dilemma as in Chuk. They asked for two hundred thousand international. They were only given a hundred thousand, but their state government matched another hundred thousand. For right now, Pompe is coming in with a hundred fifty participants. Only twenty-five will be funded by the National, about a hundred twenty-five is funded by their state government and a hundred twenty-five, we're talking more than a hundred thousand for them to come here. And of course, the national government, although it's their initiative, they really won't be getting, um, I don't think they're, they're gonna really make any money. Uh, I think the hosting would make a lot of money. So we have six dancers now, or the practicing. We, we've talked to the communities about the catering part. Basically, a lot of preparation has been done. So to give us, say, less than a hundred ten thousand, then you know that our efforts will only be able to meet that. I'm asking the, you know, the task force has really put in a lot of work on this. But if it's to postpone, it's good that we, that, you know, the leadership lets us know. So we can tell everybody that has already done the, the preparations and the booking to come to Yap in advance. So basically, yeah, that's all I have to say. Kumwara, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Go ahead, Chair.
Yap, Kumwara Chairman. I just have, because I'm still confused about, because we're looking at this budget of a hundred ten thousand. And the only activity that I see that's being budgeted for is the six dances. So is that all that Yap will be doing during the six weeks or, or the six days, or will there be other activities beside that? I'm also confused because there's nothing for transportation, there's nothing for food to feed these people. So is there another plan somewhere or other money coming in to feed these people or how are we doing that?
Uh, thank you. The initial request, uh, two hundred sixty-five thousand, they have all those in there. So we assume that when they got the hundred thousand, they're all built into that. So what they ask for legislature to file is, is the others that are not included in that hundred thousand. So, and then when we start reviewing this and we were making our recommendation, and there's one in there that it says four band groups, five thousand dollars each. Each state will bring in a band. So are we paying bands for Pompe to, to come and perform here? Because, you know, that doesn't sound good to us and we don't wanna do it because it's supposed to showcase traditions. Uh, but we are paying somebody's band to come in, to perform dance here and paying them five thousand dollars each. Those are some of the concerns we had during our meetings. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think my question was answered. Okay, so.
Uh, go ahead, YVB. Please respond to Chair's, uh, question.
Thank you for the question. Uh, the food is a separate, uh, it's a different story. The food is funded by the national government, twenty-five participant from each state. If the, if the state is gonna bring in more than twenty-five, they will have to pay for that food. So now that we know the numbers of participants, the, the state level will be paying Yap State if we're gonna have, for example, fifty people, twenty-five will be paid by National, twenty-five will be paid by Pompe State or whatnot. And as for the activities, yes, they're not in this specific budget, but it's in the other budget that's for National, the other hundred thousand.
Yeah, go ahead, Chair.
Uh, Kumwara, I, I'm totally in agreement and with the same confusion that the good Vice Chairman have. Because we have a lot of budget breakdown that has been submitted, uh, some to us, uh, some to the national government. And yet, when there is changes in, uh, appropriation law based on figures, we, we do not know what to, to fund here. And, and remember, a couple of weeks back, you guys were here. And Yap State, right now, is spending money. We're using existing fund to improve facilities. So have those been taken into consideration in term of readjusting? Some of this, uh, projected budget that has been set down, because we know two hundred thousand has been requested, hundred thousand has been approved for Yap. What are some of the identified activity that has been earmarked for those? We need to see that. And then the education existing fund has been, you know, Director of Education has agreed that we will use some of those existing. Is adjustment has been made here? These are the confusion that we have. And then we have the Rmung, uh, infrastructure improvement to address some of this Expo activity. Have the Rmung, uh, community agreed to use their existing money or we're still going after Yap State to fund? And if that, uh, if the Rmung Chief agreed to use the hundred thousand, uh, that is for Rmung municipality, will those, uh, infrastructure be ready by July? The tank, the restroom, the water to fill into the tank, I, we don't know about the weather. Are we ready with what we have here in town, but what about the community level? Are we ready? Uh, most especially in Rmung with all the logistic work going there? That's the concern that I have with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. You, you can have follow-up on your.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be nice to know what's gonna happen during these three weeks beside the six dance that's being budgeted for. Uh, what's, because we are hosting, we're exposition, we're supposed to showcase our skilled, traditional skilled local food and dances and all this, but what are we gonna do during the rest of the day? One dance a day for the six weeks or what are we doing?
Shirukumwara, yeah, we have a program already and we're working with all the HBO and whatnot. And this is where we had to cut some of our budget and try to make sure that the offices pay for. Because, uh, and for, for example, two hundred sixty-five, some was cut because of education, they can take care of it. Some of the, the marketing materials and whatnot was cut off because YVB will have to take care of it. We're trying to really minimize this, uh, budget. Uh, in the program, everything is ready in terms of what you're doing each day. And this, we have been working with the communities and also HBO and other departments. If you wanna copy of the program, we'll be, yeah.
Uh, thank you. Well, I just have another question on the budget itself. Where it says, um, uh, four hundred plus participants to Rmung, which will cost eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, how are you gonna transport it, four hundred people to Rmung? Uh, during this day? Because if you transport in one day, I think it's gonna take whole day to transport. By the time thirty people are there, that low tide that takes over and then you cannot do that. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for that question. We actually met with Rmung because they wanted to host, on behalf of Yap State for all the participants. We even looked at the tide table and we even adjusted it through the program. And we've even talked to how we're gonna mobilize them back and forth. So in the program, it should show what time to go there, how many boats, uh, do we need from where? We have preparations on that. We've talked to Monterey Marine Resource and even the community is willing to assist on that. Kumwara.
Thank you. Uh, my other concern is, uh, during the Yap Day, when Yap Day was breaking up a little bit here and a little bit there, we got feedback from the guests that come from our island. They said, that's the worst day they've seen. Uh, because it was broken up. Israel considered it one area. They have to move here and there. So they said, no, we're not gonna go. So, because for them, it's like a money-generated event for Yap. It, it, it's not just the showcasing the culture, tradition. It's more of money-making. Uh, we're moving here so this community can make a little bit of money. And then we move there so that community can make a little bit more money and, and not showcasing the culture. That, that's what we've heard from the visitors. They, they came in the past Yap Day and it was really good except that one. It's the worst Yap Day with the last one. Yeah, and, uh, do you conduct a survey after each event? So you can have a good plan for the next one? So you can get the negative feedback and the positive feedback, so you can capitalize on those positive feedbacks. Now, this Expo, it looks like it's modeled after that Yap Day. It's breaking up a little bit here and a little bit there. And did they do it in, because right, Pompe and Chuk, they, they break it up so it got there and there and there, all over the place? Because if it's only as in Yap and it's like that Yap Day where we're trying to generate income instead of showcasing the culture, then we don't know if we're gonna be successful in doing a good Expo. If we're gonna make it the best, then I don't know if it's gonna model after that Yap Day. And we've already got a feedback for some of us. We've listened to those guests and they said, that's why it's the worst Yap Day. Uh, so, uh, I'm just bringing it up so maybe YVB can do a survey right after each event, especially Yap Day. So we'll know if we're successful or we're just doing this to generate money. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Chair.
Uh, Kumwara Chairman, I, I just wanna do a counterpoint to my good Chairman here because I thought the fiftieth and this last one were some of the good ones and they were at different events, a different venue. So I guess we can please everybody. But for me though, that was, I thought that was a good one. And the fiftieth, which had, I think, three different sites, was also one of our better ones. So again, uh, our guests, uh, I guess if they're older and don't wanna move around a lot, maybe. But for the, some of the others, I appreciate going to the different, uh, Gileth Mill, coming here to town for the fiftieth. I thought that was good to have it. So I, it's just my counterpoint. I, it.
Thank, thank you, Chairman, but it's always good to have a, a survey so we can measure our performance. If, well, we're doing a good thing or we need improvement. Uh, I think we, we'd never do this, uh, but a small survey, saying, asking people, even guests, if are they satisfied with the setup, the venue and the performance? I, I think will give us a better update or whatever, good plan for the next. I, I think will give us a better uh, update or whatever, a good plan for the next one. So. Anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, Chairman, and respects to everybody. Um, a simple question. With, if we are able to secure the additional hundred thousand, if we can get that additional hundred thousand, so we will have two hundred thousand, are we still expecting that uh there will be additional that we need to come up with? Or is that it? Can we make do with that two hundred thousand? Thank you.
If the legislature is able to give a hundred thousand to match the other hundred thousand, we're able to, if it's more, it's better. Oh, what's the question? Shiro.
He's asking if uh they come through with the ask that we made of National with two hundred. Is there something more on top of that two hundred that the state is about sixty-five? Is that what we're looking at? That's what he's asking.
We will ask ten thousand. That, that would be the remaining, if that answers you. Sorry.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Now, Kumwara Chairman, may I request that the committee or the task force submit us the total budget for this event? Indicating the Yap State, Yap State share of the funding? And so we can see the total picture, including the, the program and everything. Because right now, it's very hard for, I don't, I don't know you guys, but for me, I don't know what I'm approving this budget for beside the six dances that's indicated here.
Uh, thank you, uh, please uh, do that. Uh, and for the money that is uh, was appropriated. Uh, I think Talati was the president, so we will never see anything. And uh, have you sent them the breakdown of what, uh? Well, okay, so we will never see a, a PCD because it's, it's the national government. So payment will come out from the national government to pay vendors and whatever, whoever's participating in the activities. Uh, so yeah, yeah, please provide the information that uh, um, Vice Chair of Red is asking, that would be good information to have. Yeah, if you can have a table breaking down what uh national government is funding and what is expected of Yap State to, to fund. And at the same time, we will be waiting for you for any response. You know, you guys from your uh plan uh vote call to national government. Uh, thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Something that is very interesting and we have the experience of it so many times. Since the president is the ality of this fund, we may not see the fund and they're very slow in processing the payment. Uh, and, and the reason why I, I, with all due respect, Acting Governor, please convey that to President. Because they do owe the state. Every time they come here, they owe our private sector funds. And that's, and private sector is the backbone of our small economy. So we need them to, as long as they, you guys send the thing to, to them, the invoice, they should be sending the fund as soon as possible. Because we wanna pay people after the payments. You pay them.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. And uh, in that appropriation, there's a hundred ninety thousand now for money owed to our vendors. So I don't know who's responsible, because it's, Alati is also the president. And I don't know who's responsible for making sure payments, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or uh, uh, somebody. So while in your conversation, can you please also follow up on the status of that? And if payment for the local vendors are, are being processed? That was hundred ninety thousand. Thank you, Acting Governor. Uh, any other comments? Uh, yeah, go, go ahead.
Kumwara Chairman, my question has nothing to do with money. Uh, it's just uh information. Do you have anybody representing the traditional council? Who's the task force? Is there any representative? The reason why I ask is the fact that we're hearing different kinds of information in this room. As well as when you go out there, there's different information shared in regards to expo. But the community level, they're really sitting in the dark. And they're, they will be responsible of hosting these people, staying and sleeping in their own respective community. And they don't have, they don't know what's going on. So that's why I'm asking whether, how active is the representative of the council? If it's not active, request for someone to come in so that he or she can bring accurate information to the council so that they can bring it to the community level. We, we're, I, I, I think that's our ongoing practice now with our government that we appoint people just for the sake of appointing people. But the participation and the, the activeness of that particular individual is not being felt at any level. So if it's not working, let's try to fix it. Rather than complaining about money, but the little things are not doing what they're supposed to do to uh have the bigger things happen. Thank you.
Times of religion here in Yap and the timing of the mass and their gathering, it's good to also. So when those people come in, yeah, we need to also come together as a small nation and pray. When there is, when, when whoever wants to join that, so they know the timing. And the program person, with all due respect, fix the box. When the dance is coming, one for Chuk, one for Pompei, label it so they can put some money in it. Label it. Chuk. Yap, so when they finish, you guys come. You see how committed are they to this and inform the President. And Yap, when it comes to Yap, you say a big aroma. Governor, you, you, you agree with that, Acting Governor? I don't know, it's just you guys. It, it's their custom. It was presented to us here or showcased here in many times. I don't know whether it's a good thing or not, it's really up to you. It's the success.
Uh, thank you. Any other comments?
No, I'll take over while he's answering his phone. So we've been going all over this and I'm sure if you're taking notes or what have you, but it sounds like the main thing is we need to wait for the conversation between Acting Governor and uh, and President. And uh, at least we're checking to make sure that if they say, here's the money tomorrow, we're ready to take off and do what we need to do. Uh, please don't forget, we need those, uh, at least the program to see what's going on there and some of that breakdown. So if there's adjustments to it, so that we're, uh, we have a clearer picture. And yeah, I, uh, the good Chairman of uh JHW's comment, I'm sure if we're paying for food, but at least the food has to come from somewhere. So the community members of the hosting uh communities are need to be on top of that so that they can plan for themselves and for extra mouths to feed. So that would be something that your uh community reps need to be involved in, I, I think even now. So they can start planning their menus. Um, or else. And uh, and what echo, echoing speaker, you know, we, we've seen so many different times where uh even our vendors here get tired of going through state government to get their bills paid from National, that they call National directly and get scolded for that, for doing that. We don't wanna do this with our dancers, these people who have been working, practicing all these dances. Uh, and then suddenly we're stuck between as the state that we don't pay our bills and they chase you with one of their bamboo from the dance because you need to pay them uh in a timely manner. Um, I, I think we're pretty much wrapping up. There's nothing more, right, uh, Chairman?
We can, uh, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything more to say and you're right that they uh, they need to make sure national government pays their bill. Uh, we're not as uh prompt uh as well because I understand Yap Day was marked, but payment never goes to the dancers. So we need to look, you know, to ourselves. If we are copying what the national government is doing or somebody is not doing their job here. Uh, but when we, if we appropriate some money, please make sure that whoever is performing is getting paid. And not to, to Yap, uh, the money that we appropriated and the people never get paid. So, so I, I don't have any more, Chairman. If no more, uh, thank you, Lieutenant, uh, Acting Governor and there are people who will be waiting for those information we ask of you. Uh, our Paul Care this morning is now closed.